Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of your city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-w.gov/agenda. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, can I get roll call, please?
Council members Blaisdell.
Present.
Campos.
Present.
Milne.
Here.
Roach.
Uh, excuse me.
Thank you. Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
He will be running a little behind.
And Mayor Barajas.
Present.
Thank you.
And with that, would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Moving right along with our agenda, we'll um bring it back to item number four in the agenda, verbal reports from council members. Do we have any council members wishing to report on any meetings or events they may have attended? Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Blaisdell, and then we'll come to Councilman Serrano.
Uh, I attended the public, the Pasco Public Facilities District Meeting, and they are in, in the process of picking the designer builder for um the Aquatic Center. And they, and that will be picked on the November Board Meeting. So they're down to three out of seven. Um, and then they will also begin a process, including validation, public outreach in the coming months, design over the next year, and then construction after that. They're still planning on completion in 2025.
Thank you for recording that.
Mm-hmm.
Very exciting. We've been waiting for that project for some time now, so it's coming along. Councilman Serrano.
Thank you. Uh, today I attended a Hanford Area Economic Investment Fund Advisory Committee Meeting. Um, again, I think I've talked about this quite often. We have waste fees coming from the Hanford site that we utilize to diversify business. Right now, unfortunately, we're not, uh, we're on a moratorium for lending to private entities. Uh, that's not to say that inquiring about availability in the future is not, uh, there's certainly merit to that, but we do have some money that we're lending out potentially to public facilities or public, uh, entities. And one of those may entail at some point grant funding, uh, which would kind of come as a package deal. So to the extent that there are large public, uh, I think the City of Pasco had a million, million and a half dollar loan with HAPIC, uh, that it's working down. The Port of Pasco has one, and then I think, uh, I think the third was with the city, Kennewick. But regardless, the extent that the city could use that, you know, we're looking at, uh, making available some grant funding that we might be able to get some savings, buy down on bonds, or whatever the case is. Um, I think once we adopt that, it'll be close to a half a million dollars slide. So again, we're, we're viable, you know, staff certainly don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else wish to report on any meetings or events they may have attended? Seeing no one else reporting, we'll go on to our item number five, items for discussion. Um, we have a short agenda, so hopefully we'll get through it and not bluff anyone's feathers. And I'm looking at chief, and we have a very good relationship with our chief, so we are able to, uh, jest, um, with no repercussions. Five A, uh, Visit Tri-City the 2023 Midyear Report, entry city regional hotel motel commission, 2024 marketing plan and budget. Do we have an initial report from our city manager?
Mayor and council. Um, Mr. Lewis and his team are here tonight to talk about all the great things that they've been working on, and I'll just note that, uh, Mr. Lewis did select Pasco as his home city, so we like him very much, so thank you.
I appreciate that. It's certainly good to be here in my hometown and, uh, with a great council and mayor and organizations that, uh, service us here. I think if I just do arrow down, is it right? There we go. Yeah, so, um, I think most of you are pretty familiar with our organization, uh, but just a quick little recap, we are the official destination marketing organization of the Tri-Cities. Um, we're here to coordinate and promote the development of the destination and increase economic impact by bringing people into the area to spend their money here when they stay in hotels and recreate with us. And so that's our, that's our main objective. We've got, uh, really four key pillars that, that drive us, sales and marketing, collaborative destination development, community engagement, and then innovation in our organization. Uh, this is a, a chance tonight. Um, as a destination marketing organization, we are funded by a couple of different sources. Um, one of those is a portion of the lodging, uh, hotel tax that, uh, the hotels collect. We get a portion of that. Uh, a second portion of our budget comes through a tourism performance area or tourism performance assessment that the hotels in this area have decided to, uh, to collect a fee, uh, from their guests that they use, uh, to support our organization in marketing the destination and promoting it and bringing events and business in. And so this report that I'm about to give is, is about the tourism performance area assessment funds that we have. So we'll go over that, um, and we'll talk over a couple of requests that we have with the budget, and then you'll see the bottom there. We want to just do a quick little ta- touch on, uh, Iron Man. I think most of you may have heard the news that we, we won the bid to host that event, uh, next year, and so, um, we're, we'll, we'll talk just quickly about that as we go through this. Um, just a couple of things from our mid-year report. Uh, this is for the six, first six months of, uh, 2023. Um, we've noticed that nationally and here, travel demands have softened a little bit. Um, the, the heightened travel that came as a, as a result of getting out of COVID and everything has kind of slowed off a little bit, mainly due to, uh, recessionary pressures. Um, people, people just, uh, a little bit financially strapped due to the inflationary pressures. Um, 2.4% decrease in room nights sold, but despite that decrease, um, the Tri-City still leads the state in occupancy percentage, so we're doing well, uh, compared to our, our neighbor organizations around the state. And the increase in our RevPAR, which is a hotel term that, uh, Councilwoman Blaisdell would understand, but, uh, RevPAR is short for revenue per available room. Uh, some of you probably know that, but, uh, that, uh, that number has increased. We've had the second highest increase in the state in that number over the last, uh, the first six months of the year. So, so a couple of good numbers despite the, the overall slight decrease. Um, you can see some of the numbers from our convention and, uh, marketing teams. Um, eighty-six, uh, conventions and sports groups that were booked over that first six months. Uh, the visitor spending from that is about thirteen million. Uh, lots of different sales activities going on to, to generate that kind of business, and you can see that there. And then future-wise, uh, we, we have about forty future conventions on the books and future visitor spending for this year is, um, at, at, as of the first six months was another almost five million. Um, that has increased, uh, rapidly over the last couple of months, so a couple of good things going on there, too. Um, as far as our marketing and communications go, some good things happening there. The, the chart with the lines and the bars on the side kind of show you sort of our web traffic. Uh, the, the line graph is web visitations, and the bar charts are the advertising programs that we're using that are kind of, you, you can see when the advertising's out there, the web visitation goes up, and so there's, there's a direct correlation there. But you can see some of the numbers there and, and, uh, visitors and that that we're, we're gaining through the marketing that we're doing. Our organization is also, uh, involved in a lot of different, uh, collaborative efforts through the community. We, we manage a lot of different groups, as you can see there, the Hotel Directors and Hotel Motel Commission, the Wine Tourism Council, National Park Committee, Sports Council, River Shore Enhancement Committee, and the Tri-City Strategic Alliance. We're involved in, in all of those through our, uh, development and collaboration efforts. So now into the tourism promotion area and the budget that goes along with that. Um, this money is, is legislated, how we can spend it. It has to go towards marketing efforts, and so you can see some of the areas there that are specific to that, uh, those marketing efforts that we make. Um, also, uh, it's regulated by Hotel Motel Commission, uh, which consists of representatives from each of the communities, uh, representatives from a lodging community in, or a lodging partner in each of the communities as well, and you can see those listed there, uh, who that is. So here's our, um, a, a little bit of an overview just on, on where we're at. Uh, you can see occupancy levels in 2021 were about fifty-seven percent in the area. That has increased in 2023 to about sixty-three point five percent. Um, and we anticipate that will go up just slightly over the next, uh, few years. Uh, the RevPAR, like we talked about, has come from seventy-two dollars per night to ninety-seven, ninety-five per night in 2023. And then the bottom, uh, chart there shows, uh, how that compares with other areas in the state. So you can see Seattle has the, the greatest increase in RevPAR at sixteen point two percent. They're, they really came out of COVID finally. It took them a long time to get out of it, but they, their increases has come up substantially, but we, we sit second at twelve point four percent there. In terms of, uh, productivity, um, you can, you can see twenty-twenty-two numbers, convention bookings were nineteen thousand six hundred fifty-four. Our forecast for twenty-three is down a little bit, twenty-three thousand, even though some of the other numbers are going up. Our convention business still down just a little bit, and part of the reason for that, um, we've had a lot of transition in staff over this last year, and we had some sales positions that were out for a while as we tried to rehire and put those together. Now that we have that staff boosted up again, um, the sales are coming back considerably. The efforts of the team are making, making an impact, and so you'll see more of that in the, in the second half of the year, but we are projecting what to be down just a little bit in 2023. And then you, you can see also the lead generation. We just tracked that, how many leads we're sending out to the hotels that they're coming through. This is the budget portion, and I'll try to just go through this fairly quickly, but, um, convention sales, uh, the total program for that, budget for that is, is about eighty thousand dollars. That's the advertising, the trade shows, and the, uh, memberships and the associations that we work with that bring those events and groups here, so we work, work through that. Um, and again, the, the projections on where we're going there, we're looking at about twenty thousand rooms there. On the sports side, a little bit more, uh, marketing dollars in sports, a hundred and forty-two thousand. Uh, again, advertising bid fees for sports, a lot of the big events require a, a bid or a hosting fee, and then the trade shows and things that we go to, we do a lot of, represent the area in a lot of different trade shows out there. And then the biggest part of the budget is, uh, really the, the development side. This is our general advertising that goes out regionally, um, print, digital, social, broadcast, visitor guide, all of those things that we do to market the destination and promote the destination. So you can see essentially where that's being sp- uh, spread as well. So that gives you the total budget numbers there. Um, this is just a little more comparative data for you to see. Budget-wise, uh, the, the Kennewick TPA brings in about eight hundred and eighty thousand, Pasco four hundred and thirty, and Richland is seven hundred and thirty-eight, but you can see projected budget in 2024, Pasco, uh, goes up substantially. We've had a lot of big increase in Pasco this year. The percentage is looking really good, and it continues to go up. Part of that's due to new hotels that have come in, create more availability, but, um, there's, there's good business going on, especially around the airport area, some really good stuff happening there. And then the bottom chart there just shows you comparatively where we sit compared to some of the other destinations in the area. For instance, Spokane, their overall budget's about sixty, uh, six point seven million, where ours is about three point two million in budget, so comparative data there. The last thing, uh, on this that I want to go over is, uh, some, some requests for project funding. Um, so in, you know, because of our, uh, the way we budget and the way we spend, we're, we're fairly conservative. I don't want to say we're really tight, but we're pretty conservative and smart about our money, and, and at the end of each year, uh, over the last several years, we've had some balance of funds left. Those go into a reserve account, and this gives you a breakdown of, of the balance of that reserve account. So two point two million, it was the balance as of August thirty-first. Um, we hold back a hundred and fifty thousand in that for operating expenses that we just keep on hold, and then another five hundred thousand is our minimum reserve balance that we keep on, on hand, just so if the things really fluctuate or get, get crazy, we have some funds there. But that leaves about one point six million in available funds that are there for, they're, these are marketing dollars that really don't do us any good sitting in a bank. They want, they want to be spent, right? And so, um, we've committed some projects previously that we're working on and that will get spent out to, uh, to the tune of about seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, which leaves about eight hundred and seventy-one left in that reserve account, uh, for, for spending. Uh, so we've, we've proposed with that eight hundred and seventy-one thousand this year a couple of new projects, um, that we'd really like to, to work on, uh, and, and we presented these to the Hotel Motel Commission, got unanimous approval for these projects, but the first one is a restructuring of our digital marketing programs. And, and what we're trying to do there is, is develop programs digitally that meet the visitor where they are in their planning process. And if you think of, if you think of the visitor, visitor decision-making process as a funnel, it starts out with inspiration and dreaming, goes down to consideration, then they start planning, eventually they're booking, and pretty soon they're in, you're anticipating their, their trip here, and then they get here, and hopefully when they go home, they share their experience. So we're trying to meet them wherever they are in that journey digitally, and with the, with the tools that are available now, uh, in the digital space, you can do that pretty effectively to targeting really specifically where they're after. And so what we want to do is restructure the marketing materials, the website, and other materials to, to match that strategy so that as we bring that traffic to our website, they, they can continue down that funnel in a really streamlined process. So we're asking for a hundred and twenty-five thousand to retool all of those, those, uh, elements of our marketing. The second one is support for signature events, and we talked a little bit about Iron Man. Um, we also won the bid this year to host the twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-seven World Horseshoe Pitching Tournament. I don't know if you heard that one, but little different than an Iron Man, I think two different extremes of, of sports, but that one's actually a pretty neat event. Um, who knew there was a World Horseshoe Pitching Tournament, right? But, uh, we'll bring about a thousand horseshoe pitchers from around the country and Canada, uh, into the Toyota Center and Toyota Arena in, at the end of July next year for two weeks as they pitch for a world title in horseshoe pitching. It's a great event. Um, they bring a lot of, uh, family with them, they spend a lot of money in the restaurants and stuff, and we'll invite you guys down. We'll have a, a mayor's cup or something that you can come down and be involved in. Um, it's a, it's a great event. Anyway, when, when we win these kind of, uh, signature events, when we get the opportunity to host those, they require a lot, a lot more logistics, setup and organization, but they also give, provide a ton more opportunity to, to talk about the event and to get media exposure and, and public relations, press efforts and so forth. And so what we're requesting is that we have, we, we pull aside another hundred thousand dollars that we can utilize to take advantage of those opportunities and support the logistical requirements of the events. So those two things are, are on our request, and, and we would appreciate your support. As I say, they both, uh, received unanimous approval from the, uh, tourism commissioners and what we presented to them. Um, and then I'm not sure what the process is on, on talking about those. You guys do that afterward or whatever, but you just let us know what your, what your vote is there, and then we'll go to work on that. The last thing then I had on my agenda was to talk a little bit about the Iron Man event. Um, and if you want to take just a minute, kind of give you a heads up, we, uh, we secured the bid to host that event for three years. It's a three-year contract that starts in September of 2024. Actually, the contract starts now, but the, the race will start September of 2024. Um, that event will bring in about twenty-five hundred triathletes from around the world. Uh, we'll probably have just about every state represented when they, when they come. A lot of the, the bulk of them will be from the Pacific Northwest and the West, but they spread out, and you'll, they'll come from all over the place. Uh, they'll bring with them another seventy-five hundred, uh, athlete, uh, sorry, fans and, and supporters, family members and all of that, support team. It's a, it's a massive undertaking. Um, Iron Man seventy point three is a swim one point two miles. That will take place in the Columbia River. Uh, it will start at Howard Amon Park and swim down to Columbia Point Marina. And Columbia Point is sort of the hub of the, uh, the whole operation. That's where the Iron Man Village will be. That's where they'll park their twenty-five hundred cycles, uh, bikes that are, you, you have to go down there and see that when they're all racked up, and those are some pretty expensive bikes in the, in the parking lot there. Um, but they'll all be housed there, all of the action will there, will be there, so when they come out of the water, they run up on the, on the bank, hop onto the bike, and we got to find fifty-six miles of bike to get them through the, the community and then back to Columbia Point, where they, uh, then jump off the bike, put on the running shoes, and do a thirteen point one, a half marathon. They run up the trail system, uh, on the riverfront there, and they end up at WSU Tri-Cities and then come back. And so that, that's the run. The bike is actually going to go out, um, out of Richland and into West Richland, kind of wrapping around Badger Mountain and up on, uh, Badger Canyon Road. They'll loop back on Jacobs Road, which is the one right in front of Goose Ridge, if you know that one, and then make their way back into West Richland and back to Richland and come down, um, George Washington Parkway as they make their way back to Columbia Point. So it's pretty neat, a bike route. I was on, uh, social the other night, somebody had posted the bike map, and there were about seventy comments of people commenting on the, on the route, and, you know, they just posted the map and said, what do you think of this? And, and I, you know, I think honestly, I, I don't recall a negative comment about the bike route. They were pretty excited about it. A, a couple of questions about it, but most of them pretty excited, so, um, that's, that's the, uh, Iron Man event, uh, that, again, with those people coming in during that timeframe, that, that event will bring in about eight million dollars in economic impact, we're estimating during that week, and then subsequent weeks beyond that. We get a lot of publicity out of the event, um, brings a lot of credibility to the destination, so we're excited about what, what that event brings. It probably took up too much time, but, uh, was what you wanted. Open to questions if you have any.
Lewis, thank you. Can you repeat the amount of athletes expected?
Yeah, twenty-five hundred athletes. And about seventy-five hundred other visitors, so close to ten thousand people in town for the event.
Any questions, uh, Councilman Campos, and then Councilman Serrano?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, you'd be surprised at how creative people can be with, when it comes to sports. I saw something the other day where guys were throwing frisbees, probably about twenty yards between one another, and the object is to slap their frisbee into a basket. I, I, whatever, if people want to be competitive about whatever, they, that's so cool for doing that. Uh, my big question is, is you've touched on your ROI for the support of signature sports events. That's a no-brainer. That's really easy to understand. Um, I believe Visit Tri-Cities has been in front of us once before, and we've talked about other marketing, um, things that you guys were trying to employ, such as like an app, and my big question is, is what's your projected ROI for restructuring of digital marketing programs? What, what is that going to actually translate back into dollars for you?
We, we actually did some test marketing with a, a program this year with one of our providers. Um, in, in one of our campaigns, I saw a, um, thirty, I think it was thirty-six to one return on the ad spend, and the other one that we did, another, a little bit smaller, was twenty, twenty-eight to one. So, and that was over the course of about two months, just a small, small investment. So that, those are the kinds of numbers that we're looking for as we spend the money targeted to the right people. We can actually track those people to come back to the destination using the technology that's out there. We don't know who the people, the individuals are, but we know that devices saw the ad, and then they showed up in the destination three weeks later. So those are the kinds of numbers that we're getting.
Okay, that's helpful. Um, other than that, hopefully, I'm gonna pray that there's no algae bloom next year for you guys, and good luck.
Anybody has any insights on algae bloom, we'd love them. Let's, let's get that figured out, right?
Councilman Serrano?
Well, I, I think that's really where I was going, is I appreciate that you guys, you know, for the several years I've been on council, initially I was on your board. Uh, it was a great board to be on, and, uh, I love that you've got some homegrown folks that are continually rising through the organization.
They're awesome.
You've got some great talent. Um, but yeah, that was kind of my comment, too, is I've, I've noticed the way you've revamped continually and retooled your digital marketing from the geocaching and that sort of thing. I appreciate the expenditure, and you've kind of answered where it's going, so I don't want to re-ask the question, but again, it's, it's nice to watch how you collaboratively and collectively come up with new ways to market a lot of the same places and, and, uh, bring in new faces, so thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Um, seeing none, uh, Mr. Lewis, thank you again for your presentation. I do have a question for, uh, staff, though. Since we're attracting large crowds of visitors potentially coming to Pasco to just swing by, just see what Pasco is, um, do we have any, this is a question from the community, actually. Do we have any funds available to aid in beautification of our city streets, areas, parks, um, flower beds, murals, to attract the visitors that we'll be bringing in? No need to answer now, but, you know, just something on your plate.
The, the list, and, uh, the Director of Fun over here has already been working on some, uh, um, ways to, to make sure we're, we're not missing an opportunity.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, new title, Director of Fun. Mr. Lewis, thank you again for your presentation.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate all your help and, uh, look forward to seeing you out. Uh, watch for the Lycra on the road, because the cyclists will start riding more and more as it gets closer, so appreciate your involvement.
Thank you again. Um, with no other questions, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, item B, Presentation of Proposed Housing Action and Implementation Plan from Director Gonzalez.
Uh, good evening, council. Uh, for the past year or so, staff from the Department of Community and Economic Development have been, uh, engaged with, uh, our community members, um, our stakeholders and how, ha- housing advocacy organizations for the, uh, uh, development of Pasco's first housing action implementation plan or housing plan. Uh, this is Pasco's first comprehensive housing plan. Um, the plan was supported, uh, with a grant from the Washington State Department of Commerce. Uh, Pasco was one of twenty-eight communities who applied and received funding to produce a plan, and, uh, within short distance in our region, the only other communities, uh, were the City of Pasco, certainly, uh, City of Prosser and Walla Walla also pursued and received funding, so a short list of, in our region. Um, the state legislature created this grant program in twenty-nineteen to help, uh, address the statewide housing affordability crisis and encourage local communities to prioritize creation of affordable, uh, and inclusive neighborhoods, and certainly Pasco has been successful with the help of council and our leadership over the past couple of years, uh, adopting several policies and regulations to help produce more housing. Uh, so tonight, we have, uh, our team from Oneza and Associates and Eek Northwest, both for Deuce Oneza, and Morgan Shook are on the, uh, call this evening to help present the findings of the housing plan, and with that, I'll pass on, um, the presentation to the both of you.
Is Oneza on?
Can you hear me? I mean, I-
I can hear you.
Okay. I don't know if you can see me, but, uh, yeah, there you go. Thank you. Thank you so much, and thanks for inviting us for this, um, presentation this evening. Uh, I would, I would like to, um, commend the city for, um, taking this important initiative um, to this, uh, building on this Pasco Housing Action and Implementation Plan. Uh, we all know how important housing is, and we all know that many of us are, um, facing the, the crisis, and, and housing is becoming more and more, um, difficult to afford. So with that, uh, let's go to the next slide, and, um, we will. So, do I need to, okay, yeah, there you go. Thank you. So, um, I just wanted to touch on the purpose of this housing action plan. Uh, like it says, it is an action plan, so it will have, uh, it has a number of strategies and actions. The purpose is to have, um, to encourage the supply side of housing, to encourage more construction of different types of housing for Pasco residents, and also, um, have a policy document that creates a pathway for, for development of more housing. And also, um, this is a, a comprehensive map, and I would like to point out that this actually is based on Pasco's data, so we have tailored this whole document and strategies and actions based on Pasco's conditions. So let's go to the next slide. So this is an action plan, so like I said before, it will have strategies and actions, and you already have comprehensive plan, you've just adopted several years ago, so these documents would go hand in hand together, because, um, this action plan, this is, this has more updated data that will feed into the comprehensive plan, but there are interrelated , uh, policies and, and they support each other, and once you, when you update your complaint again, then you will be able to, to gain some information from- From this updated uh data from the housing action plan. Of course, we know that data changes every um, every time. And then there would be implementation strategies that you will implement this housing action plan. The action items based on the tools that you already have, like your zoning code, development regulations. Your capital facilities plan to spending uh of your infrastructure, all of that. So let's go to the next slide. So uh I'd like to touch on the engagement of effort on this housing actual plan. As you can see that we have uh reached out to a wide range of stakeholders. We have about seventeen agencies in this um stakeholders group. We have had already three workshops and we will have another workshop tomorrow. Um so the way this, this stakeholders group is, is designed so that we could address a diverse group of housing suppliers. Supply side, demand side, and also the um the nonprofit side. So, so different types of housing supply. So you say that we have realtors, builders, we have nonprofit um organizations and then um. Business owners, so it's, it's a combination of all. And not only that, we also try to reach out to Pasco residents to see what their input um are gonna be. Because they're the, the most important group who will be living in Pasco. So um so what we asked them is that uh what are, so we, we asked them a several. A set of questions in the survey. We asked what type of homes they were living in, uh what would they uh prioritize? And what would they want for housing action plan in future? And we found some very interesting um information. I mean, not interesting, but uh very strong. Uh and key points from this survey is that most of the, the. One, one thing I would like to point out is that most of the, the responses came. Uh that they wanted to maintain their house, they wanted to live in their house, be able to live in their, um their existing homes. And then also wanted to be able, able to have access to homes. But another important aspect was that eighty percent of, of your uh survey participants uh mentioned. That they at one point of their life had lived in apartments. So that's a big number, that eighty percent of survey per se, participants, they, they did mention the other type of housing. Except in addition to just single family or one, any particular type of homes. Um so these are the kind of information we gathered. Um so uh definitely preferred access to housing. And then also there was uh another key point was that they know, I mean, almost all of them. Say that they know somebody or they have uh faced difficulties in housing and some way or the other. So, so that, that actually gives us more um uh i- indication that how important this. Housing action plan is going to be. And we had um, the, the city had two, two different surveys. One in, in Spanish and one in English. And uh we received about eight hundred and seventy responses, which we feel that was a significant response from, from a survey like this. Uh we will have some detailed information, uh somewhat key aspects of this housing action plan. And I'm gonna let Morgan talk about this.
I always gotta remember how to unmute myself on different platforms. Um uh good evening, Councilmembers and thank you for having us. Uh I, I think as Anesa was saying, um uh these hu- housing action plans are built on robust engagement. Uh with your community and the stakeholders have, who are sort of in providers in the housing space that includes nonprofits. But also folks who do a lot of building and operating of, of housing. And um these housing action plans that uh Commerce has funded has also asked. Um communities to take a look at some of the housing trends and understanding something about how your community is different from others. With respect to sort of what's driving demand on the dema- demographic side and how you might be able to supply that. Um and then uh we'll touch on this a little bit. It also asks you to sort of understand sort of future needs. As it might relate to different socioeconomic uh segments in your community. So um the slide you see here is a quick just representation that uh in the Tri-Cities. And broader sort of south central, southeastern Washington, uh the nature of the sort of uh housing change here. Represented by um change in um uh median home value as measured by Zillow has not been uniform, right? So to the extent that um you know, what's happening in, in Richland is also portable to Pasco. Is not a starting place that we should, we should be considering here. But in all cases, I mean, what's happening in Pasco has sort of outpaced the experience. In other uh communities, uh but a lot of those drivers are signi- are similar, but there's some different characteristics to that. So let's go to the next slide. Uh one of those big characteristics that this plan is really trying to understand is how that uh rising price. Has hit uh folks on the ownership side, so people looking to sort of buy homes uh versus those who are trying to rent homes. And so what you see here is a um uh comparison of uh median renter incomes. Um relative to twenty-ten and twenty-twenty-one. And what we see here, right, owner income has increased much faster than, than renter income. The uh impact of this, right, is on the next slide uh with respect to sort of the price changes. So let's move to the next slide. And those price changes here, what we see uh in sort of changes on affordable uh rent, our average rent and median sale price. And so uh we, we look at sort of changes in this growth. So we've seen robust changes, robust, robust growth in both. Uh rental prices as well as home prices. Uh but for the most part, uh incomes have risen much faster at the same level. To support a lot of those home prices. We'll, we'll throw out what's happening with interest rates right now. That's a, that's a different story going forward for sure. Um and then uh but incomes haven't risen as fastly as median rent, suggesting that we're having a lot more tightness. Particularly in things that might be more abhorrent to renters such as multifamily housing or some of the single-family housing stock. And so uh one of the things that the plan it really recognizes here is the need for housing. And the pressures for housing affordability aren't sort of spread uniformly amongst um uh people who are likely to rent. Versus those who are likely to own. So let's go to the next slide. Um so we take a lot of that information, understand some of the demographic changes. Um with respect to sort of how the community is aging, uh its sort of racial and cultural makeup. Um and we try to, as Oneza had mentioned, make this consistent with the city's comprehensive planning process. Um and knowing that the um, the process that you're engaged in now has to understand sort of with some respect. That there are just gonna be a lot more people living within the City of Pasco. And so if we go to the next slide here, uh we take that information and we try to provide some understanding. Of how much housing we are likely to need to sort of meet that growth in population. And the idea here is so that, not necessarily that we have a target, but that we have a, a, some sense of what policy. Has to be accommodative to. Um and so there are kind of two components to this uh in the color scheme you see here. Um the, I'll start with the light blues since that's the most straightforward. There's some expectation that there are people who are going to be living in Pasco who aren't here now and we need to build new housing, right? And that's that number in blue, or the sort of those bars in blue. And then um there's also some recognition that because of um uh housing cost burdening. Due to scarcity in the marketplace, um that there's really some housing that's not observed. So housing that if we would be more, the city would be in a more affordable place if that housing was here. We call that underproduction and that's in that pur- dark purple color. And what we then try to understand is say, well, um how best can we understand sort of the socioeconomic makeup? Because you're gonna need housing that, you know, there are just gonna be high earners in your community um and that they are there today. And they're likely to be there tomorrow and they're gonna command housing that's going to be at a certain sort of set of price points and affordable to them. Uh but then there are folks who are gonna be doing, um who are in um, you know, you know, working in different kinds of industries. Where the pay may not be as competitive in other places. And there are those folks whose income might be so low. Um that it's going to be important to provide some types of public or other supports. For kind of quote-unquote more affordable housing. And that's particularly where you see the distribution of housing that's in that sort of underproduction piece. We think that's all housing that really, the stuff we don't observe today uh really hits sort of renter and lower income households harder. And finding ways to sort of provide supply in those categories will really help alleviate some of those ability uh challenges. That um the community is experiencing. So we take all this information. Um and um we worked with uh Oneza and the city, uh we've worked with many jurisdictions. Looking at ways to uh take this and prescribe a set of actions. And I think actions that I think the city is already sort of moving forward with. So um many different sort of uh initiatives that are concurrent to this process. Um that I know you, you are engaged in. So I'm gonna turn it back to um Oneza to kind of walk us through. Um some of the recommended strategies that we have.
Yeah, let's go to the next slide please. Yeah, and, and this slide, uh Morgan and I, we will tech team and talk about it. Um in all of this, this five important strategies, we developed these strategies based on our discussion with the stakeholders. And then also based on the survey um results that we, we have. So we synthesized them. And we also have uh action items under each, but we wanted to discuss the strategies and, and explain a little bit. Um so number one is remove regulatory barriers and encourage the development of a variety of housing types. So this is something that I, uh that I believe that Pasco is leading in the Tri-Cities area. Because you have already taken some important measures in updating your zoning code and allowing various housing types. For example, ADUs and different housing types that you, your zoning code update hasn't put in. So, so those are the kind of regulatory barriers that um, that would, once you remove those barriers. That would encourage more housing developments. Um and then uh Morgan, do you wanna add anything to this? Or, or I can go with, with number two. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, sorry. So let's, let's uh go to the, the next uh strategy is increase, well, not, not the next slide, let's go, yes, thank you. So increase the number two strategy is increase opportunities for homeownership. So this is where um oh, the strategy is intended for different types of homeownership. So what it means is that it would give different options to home buyers, not just one type of homes, but different types of homes. And that would mean that um you will have uh uh different financing options, different product options. And, and so different, different um homeownership types. Uh number three is expand the supply and increase um access to affordable housing. This is where we are, um we are looking at affordable housing, different types of strategies. For example, uh can you uh look into different tax exemption options? Or can you look at, look into um land banking or um let's say different, different fund? Or even uh the city is already working on the CDBG um funding to, to promote this. So different ways to, to expand the supply and increase the, the access uh to affordable housing. Uh number four is build housing for Pasco's special population groups. So we have um discussed with the stakeholders and there are needs for different um. I would say different special needs home, especially um the uh how population with disabilities. Or transitional homes. So, so how, how this would, uh the housing action plan will cater to those special needs. So those are the types of um, types of demand that we also need to be cognizant about. And then the number five is mitigate displacement of vulnerable residents. So displacement is one of the, one important aspect of the housing action plan. Because people uh want to stay in their homes. They don't wanna be displaced by some external conditions. For example, the price is too high for me to pay tax or prices too high to pay rent, things like that. So, so nobody wants to move their, from their homes unless they want to, um or, or they're pressured to. So this is displacement is important and uh you can look into some strategies, for example, um like rental control. Or um some, some uh additional funding sources. So we have those action items listed under, under this strategy as well. So, so it's more like all, all five strategies. Uh and with the associated action items under need are gonna look into more like a diverse group of um population. And diverse uh or variety of needs in your housing action plan. Um so Morgan, if you wanna add anything?
Yeah, no, I, I think um, you know, to the extent that a lot of the actions that we prescribed are very specific and singular. I tend to think of a lot of these actions as being coordinated and have not been sort of mutually exclusive. Like you could do, you know, uh the couple from different, different, a different set of actions that would then support both of them, right? Um but I think the big pieces, when we think about these plans, is really about supply and diversity. Um um because I think if you, if jurisdictions don't tackle kind of the big question of trying to get ways to build more housing. Is to accommodate kind of the future population growth as well as your existing underproduction. Uh and then um um to sort of diversify that, to be attractive to both owners and renters. You're always gonna have those in different preferences and that tends to follow um to some degree uh of, the, the price. That people can pay by income. And so thinking about diversity of housing is really, really important. And I'd say, you know, the focal point there, and that's kind of why we have them as kind of one and two. Because if you don't do one and two properly, really makes it hard to do number three, four and five. You kind of, kind of fighting, you tend to kind of have to kind of swim upstream in order to kind of deal with these challenges. And that's been our experience working in sort of either large cities or really small cities. Um you know, you can think of like the City of Seattle, even though it's grown supply a ton, it could actually have grown supply a lot more. And because they use a lot of market rate tools and taxes to drive their affordability of cha- um uh programs. Um they end up, yeah, you know, having a, a difficult time supplying that uh uh on, on things like three, four and five. Uh we also see that in a lot of Mountain West communities as well. That might be more oriented to tourism, right? There, they could build and there's a lot of demand to build housing. Um but uh because of that sort of nature of, of those places, people, uh it's really hard to do so. Um but then it becomes really hard and very expensive just how to house the workforce that, that provides a lot of the services. That um that it, those economies sort of um work on. So that's just to help you understand some of that tension around kind of the, the, the need. To sort of, you know, deal with the underlying problem. But then that, the, that, by dealing with that, it makes it easier to kind of deal with some of the additional challenges. Where you're trying to expand supply and access to affordable housing, trying to sort of meet special needs. Uh but then you're also, then also focusing on sort of that displacement issue. So that people can kind of either stay in their communities and, or stay in their neighborhoods or their cities or their communities. Um uh 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 as well as, as much as they may desire to do so.
Yeah, I think let's go to the next slide. So this is the, the last slide and, and we wanted to give you an update where we are at. And so we are gonna have a, of the fourth and last stakeholder workshop tomorrow. Um and then uh the Planning Commission uh in November and this will come back to you in November, December timeframe. So for the fourth workshop with the stakeholders group, we have um given this, this document to stakeholders for their comments. Uh we uh, we have not received any significant comment yet. I mean, they um have mentioned that it's, it's aligned with what they were looking for in this document. And also um tomorrow we will be discussing about some of the priorities. So that would be the fun. Uh fun thing to, to do and then see what actions that the community feels more important. I mean, all of the action items, strategies that we have listed, they're all important. But underneath that, we have action items and we will uh wait to see how the, the groups feel about those. And those will come back to you. With that, I mean, we can um take any questions if there might be.
For your presentation. Um I'll open it for questions from council. Um first, we'll start with the Councilor Mr. Rana.
Thank you, Mayor. Um so I guess just really understanding what we're looking at. I see five strategies in front of me. Of those five strategies, I really only see strategy number one as one which the city controls. As far as increasing opportunity for homeownership, unless you're suggesting that we place or displace funds into um, I see the pilot program. I think the intent there, if I understand, the, the intent is to waive taxes for. Waive taxes for a particular group that would assist others getting to uh, first time housing, is that correct? This is, I saw Mr. Gonzalez shaking his head, but he stopped, so. Um, I mean, would that fundamentally roll into number two by assisting folks reach housing?
Yeah, the the pilot tax in in particular um, is staff's recommendation following um, a presentation earlier this year. From the Housing Authority of Pasco in Franklin County where um, they had indicated and shared with staff. That uh, the city of Pasco is the only jurisdiction in the state of Washington that levies the pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes. Um, this is with uh, in respects to their current um, project, uh, they're at Fourth and Pearl, just north of where we're at, at City Hall. Um, we've um, discussed this with um, internally among staff and with our finance department, de- department and um. Um, have concluded that it would not have any significant um, impacts on city's finances. Um, and would align um, the city of Pascal's housing efforts with um, uh, best practices by eliminating um. Uh, potentially burdensome tax uh, on the housing authority, allowing them to better recruit investors to uh, work with them. To uh, develop new projects or maintenance of their own facilities.
And and specifically, that goes to opening doors for homeownership uh, for first time home homeowners, if I recall, or. Or lower to median income, is that correct?
Of all the above, yeah, could be.
Okay, so I I see that as fitting squarely in number two. Um, I guess to the ex, I'm not sure that we have full control over number three, uh, you know, aside from our zoning regulations, which kind of really run into number one. Um, and then I'm not really sure where you're going with four and five. Uh, is the question or the request of council that we work and develop housing projects? Or again, I'm not really sure, as well as the displacement of vulnerable el- el- uh, residents. Again, to what impact does city council have a role in specifically uh, four and five, since you've kind of given me a roadmap on. Two and sort of three, and and one, I think we squarely, as has been said, we've already hit that and we're continually hitting that. So I guess if you can answer that question, is there really how we as policymakers hit three, four, and five, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, and I would like to mention that this housing action plan is not, not entirely for the city. And that's why we have all the stakeholders, because this is gonna be a a plan where multiple parties are going to to play their roles. Uh, for you, you were spot on when you mentioned that number one is city's uh, control, number two is a big part of that as well. Number three, under that, we have some of the considerations for the city, for example, if you are going to look at tax incentives. So um, any tax exemption that you wanna think about, that would be under the city's control. But we are also thinking about um, land banking system where city could act as a catalyst. Or a lead agent, but promote those land banking agencies, but but it's not entirely your lead, that's, that's for sure. And then another action item for number three is um, spending infrastructure funding. Where you have more different types of of uh, housing types, mixed use, for example, something that you are already doing. In the Broadmoor area, so so that's where the city's investments are going to play key roles under number three. Number four, housing for Pasco's special population group. Uh, again, you are spot on that that's gonna be part of um, nonprofit organizations. Um, for for special population groups and um, but but the city can um, like in the code. I mean, if it comes to that, that there may be a need to read the code, the city can promote that in the in the code. And sometimes city's role can be that you could um, act as a, as a resource for information. So um, any agencies or uh, that what they're doing, city could have a portal where people can come in and get all this information. Number five, mitigate displacement of vulnerable residents. That definitely is, uh, would also depend on, let's say, landlords, um, whether they are gonna be. Uh, providing any um, uh, rent control or, uh, I mean, those are the type of things. Or even te- uh, even landlords are being provided any incentives not to evict the the residents. So those are the type of things that city can decide how how um, intensely you want to be involved. Uh, we have seen that debate in in terms of um, uh, rental protection versus um, uh, incentives to the, to the. Homeowners or landlords, those types of things. Um, city can play a role into into those, those areas. Um, but again, I mean, you were right, that number three, four, and five would have to be a a multi-agency. Um, a plan, and that's why we would be looking into like who would be the lead agency. That's what we would be discussing with the stakeholders tomorrow, so good question.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you for the explanation, um, uh, Mayor Progama Brown, do you have a question or comment?
All the above, actually, I'm just gonna throw it all in there. I was hearing a couple of things as I was taking note, barriers, um, increased opportunities for ownership, inclusion, I heard diversity. Um, I just heard stakeholders, so with all that. Are the, are the, are the strategy options also including. Ideas to produce specialized lending, minority loans, first time buyer programs? That fit the bracket of the average. Layman or woman in the city of Pasco. It's loaded, but it's a pretty good question.
Yeah. I can, thank you, I can add and and Jacob and Morgan, you can jump in. So um, so we did talk about um, CDBG uh, funding. So that would be one area where city could keep doing the, the down. Um, i- i- it's the down, one, one time down payment assistance programs that can be used. Uh, we are looking into, um, so we haven't had like specific policy for minority um, lending. Uh, that we would think that that would be more of the discussion with the, with the lending agencies. And we can definitely bring that up with them. And um, yeah, Jacob and Morgan, do you have anything to add to this?
Um, yeah, I can go real quick, I'll Jacob.
Go ahead, Maury.
Yeah, yeah, I would say, um, when it comes to sort of fin- direct financial assistance, particularly for homeownership. Cities typically don't play a large role in that space, just because we have institutions. And uh, to the extent that they do, I think Oneza sort of talked about it, there are some other sort of very more specialized programs. But that is very much a conversation that happens at a council and leadership level. Yeah, to pursue those, those, those pieces, and they have to be sort of really curtailed to sort of issues of of public policy and importance. That um, given the guidelines and state law. Um, what we do see, most cities doing is working with their partners uh, in this space um, and convening them. Uh, and playing kind of that coordination and information and assistance role. Uh, to the extent that they, they uh, look at sort of these kind of specialized sort of programs around affordability, serving uh, special population groups.
Morgan, I'll also add a little bit that part of the engagement efforts associated with this plan, which was quite exciting, actually, was an opportunity for the city to begin actually. Uh, communicating with some of our financial institutions. Um, cities uh, engaged and met with um, uh, Bank of America, Wells Fargo, Banner Bank, uh, to name a few. To talk about what we can do to either encourage or help facilitate uh, potential lending uh, for more housing options. I really wanna hit on um, uh, strategies number four and five in particular, because our block grant program is being shifted to more. Align with facilitating uh, the success of those strategies. Um, as part of our ongoing block grant allocation process, in particular. Um, we have the rental assistance program, it certainly helps um, with the uh, this mitigating displacement of potential residents. Um, and uh, the uh, down payment assistance program uh, that the city also offers via our block rent uh, program. But we, we also offer a rental, I'm sorry, a a rehab program where older housing, um, uh, older housing units. Um, are, uh, the residents can apply for those funds. And many times those funds are used to bring those, those homes into uh, current standards, whether it's um, updated heating, updated windows. Um, ADA sidewalks or ADA ramps, and so I think that certainly hits the criteria for number four and and number five. Because if those units uh, sort of end up becoming in um, uh, in disparate um, sort of um, forms. Um, not safe for residents to live, then eventually your, those residents will be displaced because those units are no longer safe, and obviously, we don't want that. The city also has a fairly uh, successful rental inspectors program. Where city staff go out and inspect uh, various units on various cycles throughout the years. Uh, to make sure that those rental units um, are uh, are up to standard and up to code, and make sure that they're, they're in safe for, for our residents to live um, and stay in. And so all those things, um, there's certainly more we can do to work with our partners, but uh, what the city's already got. Um, right now is, I think, a good um, sort of foundation for moving these strategies forward.
Do you have another question?
No, I appreciate that, thank you, it's just, I needed a point of clarification. When we, you know, affordable housing conversations are, to me, really broad. So I like to bring it in because that average person that lives in a city that makes, I don't know, fifty to seventy thousand dollars a year. Maybe a single parent home, and they wanna elevate themselves through education or becoming a homeowner as a goal. It would be nice to know that, not to put the burden on the city, but to work together with these resource entities. To say, hey, there's a specialized loan for X, Y, and Z. Just the information, the resources, no, I don't want the city to bear that, but as a collective team, working together to have these resources. Would make that average, single family home successful in their goal making. So, no, I appreciate it, your information was on target, thank you.
If I can add one, one more piece of information to that. Um, is that we are also recommending um, land um, trust organizations to jump in. So that would not be just the city, but the way the land trust would work is that they would own the land. And they would um, and people would be able to buy the the house, but not the land. But then they would build equity on the home, and then over time, they would le- leave on that, that house and build. So they would be able to get equity and then build wealth that way and move to the next level of housing. So that's one of the um, the strategies and action items that that are included, that is included in this document.
Thank you, Councilman Malm, uh, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I know when I was reading through this packet and and it was very informative, I actually did really enjoy reading this, and it talked about all the different layers. Um, I did have, I mean, worth to comment on like number one, where you talked about remove regulatory barriers and encourage the development of variety of housing types. And I know, I'd hope that uh, this would never actually, and I'm not saying you're advocating for it, but taken out of the hands of the council. Cause I know like, when we talked about a, a development that was talked about as far as going in the Riverview area of Pasco. And they wanted a big apartment complex, and it actually pa- passed the planning commission. And of course, the council, knowing our districts, uh, voted it down, but these are the kind of things that I think as council members, we have a in tune with our district. So, uh, again, I know you're not advocating to take away our, our legislative uh, agenda, but I just wanted to say that. Put it on the record that I'm definitely never against this, just because as council members, we know our neighbors, we know different districts. And we know what would be good and what would not be good in certain different areas of Pasco. And then I guess my second, which is actually a question, would be, when talking the action and implementation plan, if the council approves this. Would like developments such as like the Brochi, which didn't get uh, you know, didn't get moved forward? And we heard a lot of things from developers talking about that there was resistance from the city staff. If we implement this, and obviously, we could tell that there is a need for low income housing. Would this be something that we would be more approving in the future date, if like another development came in? I know we only have so much industrial land, but uh, what is kind of the stance by moving this forward? Are we gonna see more, you know? Uh, more interaction with staff to push these developments? Or are we still, I mean, I don't know where, know where I'm going with this, but uh. It seems like there was like a pushback from what I heard as far as rumors from the development community that it didn't get pushed forward, cause staff didn't want it.
I'd remind council that that's probably a discussion that was best for executive session and that there's still a lot to be determined there. Um, and that was a certainly a one-off in in incident where there's, there's much more nuance than than the details of trying to. Allow for more housing in the city, in in my opinion.
Okay, well, I guess I'll leave, sorry about that.
No, no, you're fine, I I just think that's probably the the details of that, plus we have a new, new council member, so. Um, that that is an ongoing conversation and and Mr. Gonzalez and his team have been continuing to work on. Um, trying to to find a path forward on that particular item.
Okay, I would say more developers like that, not actually that particular one, okay.
So the uh, staff obviously has recommended, um, you know, council approval of the, the plan. And and that's exactly what this is, is it is a plan, but what separates this from others is that it's got the um. Um, specific um, recommended strategies and actions associated with the plan, some of which we've adopted, some of which we are proposing with the adoption of this plan. Itself, but no code changes, no zoning changes, no um, design standards or review things or anything like that. Associated with the plan, although called out, um, nothing else is is being proposed for a recommendation. Um, some of those may come at a later time, some of those are proposed um, as part of this, this evening.
Mayor, I think I can take what I think Councilman Milley's trying to say and boil it down to the simplest form. I I believe, uh, Director Gonzalez, you can back me up here, but this document is gonna help city staff understand. What actions they're gonna take when they hit a crossroad and they need to make a determination.
Certainly, but I think what this plan has really done is educated, um, certainly staff, but also our partners and stakeholders. Getting back to a comment earlier, that a lot of these are not um, solely the responsibility or in the purview of city staff or or council for that matter. Some of these require a lot of action and work from our partners and our partner agencies and and organizations and advocacy groups. And I think one of the benefits of our ongoing housing stakeholder workshops. Has been that consistent reminder amongst our, our cohort of sorts that this sort of re- uh, requires an all-in approach. That uh, city staff can relax all the zoning that we want, but there's private and public and nonprofit groups that need to be a part of this effort as well.
Understood, that's a great response, I think that, that helps kind of bring this, it's a community-driven thing, we're, we've got more stakeholders. That we can point them towards this to help them understand where we're trying to go, et cetera, so thank you. Uh, I think that, that boils it down, I think, a little bit better, I think we're, I think I understand exactly what you're trying to ask.
Any other comments? All right, um, I do have one question, uh, we were talking about um. Strategy number four, um, there's um, this pertain to rental assistance, from what I picked up. Pertain to rental assistance uh, programs, down payment uh, assistance programs, rehab programs, correct? Could you elaborate on those rehab programs? Um, you did mention a little bit about what it means, what it is, what it does, what it helps with. Um, I guess I'm looking for, there's a lot of property owners in downtown area that um. Need assistance, uh, um, you know, bringing those buildings up to code, up to, you know. To where they can rent them out, um, is there a year uh, limit? Is there a specific year forward that um, these property owners can apply for assistance to to the rehab assistance?
There's an annual program administered through our block grant program where properties and residents can apply for various fundings, um, funding. Uh, for a potential project um, that would qualify for that. I will um, share that just last week, the planning commissioner recommended allocations for the twenty twenty-four cycle of the CDBG funds. Um, and due to the um, the broader engagement and promotion of that uh, program. Uh, received um, much more applications and requests for funding than we have had in years past. Which then makes the allocation decision a little bit more difficult. Um, but what staff did recommend and the planning commissioner recommend was an increase to uh, the rental uh, rehab. Um, and the housing-related buckets, so that those funds um, can be incrementally increased. Um, starting with the twenty twenty-four cycle, if approved by cycle, and potentially further increase in years after. Um, I I do wanna mention that one of the biggest changes that has allowed um, home improvements and redevelopment to occur. Um, were the uh, the changes associated with council's adoption of House 1923 efforts in January twenty twenty uh, two. Uh, cause that then allowed homes that were built prior to very rigorous zoning standards in seventies and eighties. To be able to qualify to redevelop or rebuild their home, based on the standards that they were built with in several decades ago. So that's also been, I think, a much broader value to some of our older neighborhoods.
Thank you for that. Um, are there any, are the further questions or comments? Seeing none or hearing none, thank you again, Director Gonzalez.
I do wanna mention, because I I don't want to get lost, but certainly staff, um, this will be back before council. But we've also recommended um, two separate um, actions associated with this item. Uh, one is the uh, termination of the fee and lieu tax associated with the housing authority. Um, and the separate um, is an ord- uh, draft order. Um, and the separate, um, is an ord- uh, draft ordinance that would allow, um, both single-family and multifamily units to. Um, if requested by the applicant, um, have deferred impact fees. Um, impact fees are different than mitigation fees, I just wanna, uh, be clear about that. But, um, state law allows cities to adopt impact fees, state law allows cities to develop that impact fee deferral program. So, we are proposing that that also be adopted via separate ordinance, but associated with the plan. We believe that both of these, um, recommendations certainly line up with several strategies. And, and get this plan off to a very, very good start, so wanted to mention that as well.
Great, thank you. So, we'll see this again in the next couple of weeks or so. Great, thank you so much. Um, are there any other, other comments? Seeing none, um, we are almost done with this agenda. We'll move on to item number six miscellaneous. Um, council, actually no, I skipped it. I am going so fast. Item C. We almost skipped over you, Director Worley. Uh, ordinance Franklin County Irrigation District Franchise Agreement, Director Worley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh, tonight, we're presenting to you a draft copy of a, a franchise agreement between the city and the Franklin County Irrigation District. As you may know, the, uh, Franklin County Irrigation District and the city share a lot of right-ofways and easements. In the distribution of the utilities that each of us, uh, are responsible for. The district, obviously, for irrigation services, and the city for sewer water irrigation and others. Sometimes we get into situations where, uh, there are, uh, conflicts or time for both working in the same area. And so, we have decided between both agencies that it would be a good idea for us to develop a, uh, franchise agreement. That sort of outlines how we're going to work together in dealing with issues that come up during either the maintenance or construction. Of either of those utilities within either a FCID easement or a city right-ofway. And sometimes there are the same location. The easement was there first, and then the city came in later and built a road over the easement. So, we, we share areas together. So, in your packet is a draft of that easement agreement and, uh, franchise agreement, I mean. And, uh, uh, City Attorney Ferguson is happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Um, is there a cost associated?
At this point, the only cost is related to permits that are required, uh, for work to be done within the right-ofway. But other than that, there's no, uh, exchange of funds between, uh, agencies based on this franchise.
Thank you. Uh, at this point, do we have any other questions or comments from council members regarding this franchise agreement? Seeing none, Director Worley, thank you for bringing this forward, especially this, since there's no associated cost fees. Um, and I guess we'll see that in our next, uh, meeting. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Okay, so now we can move on to our next item on the agenda. Thank you again. Uh, miscellaneous council discussion, uh, city manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and council. Um, the first item is a reminder that there is no meeting next Monday, because it is the fifth Monday. And then, uh, Director Worley has an update, uh, Director Rice, Director Gonzalez, and Chief Roski. So, just FYI.
First off, I'd like to just, uh, give kind of an update on where we're at with the, uh, I one eighty-two and Broadmoor interchange project. Uh, the start of that project has been slightly delayed. A picture of it is on your, on the screen there. Um, the delay is mostly related to the fact that the contractor had a proposal. To take some of the material that needed to be wasted. Uh, and waste it inside the circle, basically raised inside the loop. And the idea there would be to, um, raise the elevation of the area within the loop. By using a lot of the material that gets wasted by, uh, grading out the new loop ramp. It took a while to develop all the information necessary, and then we presented it to the Washington State Department of Transportation. And, uh, with a little bit of time, the WashDOT decided that that would not be in their best interest. So, they decided that we will stay with what we originally proposed, which would be the contractor would haul that material off-site. And so, there is a spot over in the Broadmoor area that we've identified as a disposal area, and so the contractor will take that route. The, uh, second item that, um, has caused some delays, the contractor was required to issue a construction stormwater permit. And there is a thirty-day review period on that permit, so we are waiting for that to be done. And the notice to proceed for start of construction is now the end of November. Uh, they have three hundred and sixty working days, but the contractor has indicated that he is going to be working hard to get it done by the end of next year. So, happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions on these updates? I do have a quick question. Is there a cost associated with the change? Uh, taking or hauling the, the disposable materials somewhere else?
No, there is not, cause it was already in the bid that way.
Okay, perfect.
Good evening, council. Um, I'm gonna update you. Uh, this next Saturday is our twenty-fifth and final farmer's market of the year. Uh, it's a kind of a special event day. We are having a Halloween slash Day of the Dead event, which includes a fun run. Uh, both for, uh, five K, ten K, a half marathon, and a, uh, kids' race, which is what I entered the mayor and I in. We're gonna relay race that, right? Yeah, they said no trophies for the kids' race, but we can still do it, so. Uh, but in addition to that, um, we're gonna have judging of our pumpkin, uh, painting and carving contest, which we handed out pumpkins over the last two weekends. Uh, Halloween costume contest, of course, our normal farmer's market vendors, uh, who also be providing some trick-or-treat candy to the kids. Uh, first come, first served. And very last, a surprise visit by Santa as he sets the tone for upcoming Winter Fest, checks out the area and interacts with the kids, and helps with judging those contests. So, we hope to see you out there. Looks like it will be brisk, so I do recommend a costume that day. Uh, but, uh, we'll look for you out there. Thank you.
So, you're all invited to join us in the kid run? Wear your costumes.
If we do a relay race style, we only have to run a little distance.
Uh, I've gotta stop going after Director Rice. Um, uh, so tomorrow, we have, um, our fourth housing stakeholder workshop, as shared earlier, uh, through the housing action plan. Um, and we'll report those results to council following, um, that discussion. And then, uh, tomorrow, our inspection services staff is hosting a training, uh, sponsored by the, uh, Washington City's Insurance Authority. Uh, looking at risk reductions for several of our new staff, and also staff across eight other jurisdictions. I think about sixty in total will be attending, uh, risk training, uh, for those staff involved with building, fire, code enforcement, um, et- et cetera. So, looking forward to, uh, sharing those results with council as well. Thank you.
Mayor council, or Madam Mayor, council members, I come to you this evening with a heavy heart to let you know that earlier this morning. Retired Chief Dennis Austin passed away. He served as the chief for the Pasco Police Department from nineteen ninety-five to twenty-eleven. He would, uh, probably best be known as the foundation builder of the modern police department that you see today. Most notably, uh, community-oriented policing efforts was under his guidance and with his vision. That started, uh, uh, our ARL program and our efforts at community policing. And then, um, notably, the training division where we are today started under his, um. Uh, again, his vision of how Pasco and our officers could be better trained, um, in its infancy, and it has grown to where it is today. So, uh, um, uh, the department mourns his losing, lo- his loss, uh, this evening, so thank you.
Thank you, and deepest condolences to the family of the department, everyone. Thank you for sharing that. Um, do we have any comments from council members? Councilman Campos?
Very brief, Chief Roski, again, sorry for your last, uh, question. Does the training center have a name dedicated to it?
No, it's the Pasco Police Regional Training Center. I get your, I get where you're going. Thank you.
Um, uh, sorry, Mayor Protem Brown.
Um, just really quickly, just to the council, actually I had something I wanted to express to the council publicly. Um, it says, dear council members, I hope this letter finds you well. I wanted to express my heartfelt gratitude for offering me, um, as appointed Mayor Protem. I'm thrilled and honored to have received the appointment, and eager to contribute my skills and experience to our esteemed body of great members and the city. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you and the entire council for considering me for this role. I'm excited about the opportunity to work with such a talented group of professionals and contribute to the continued success of this council. And the capacity as Mayor Protem. I assure you that I'm fully committed to performing these duties diligently and to best, to the best of my abilities. I'm looking forward to learning more and getting started on the task at hand for our great city. Once again, thank you for your incred- for this incredible opportunity. I'm grateful for your confidence in me and my abilities, and I'm excited about the journey ahead, no matter the length of time. Res- respectfully submitted Irving Lee Brown Senior, cause that's how I do it. So, I just wanted publicly to let Pasco know that this team is, is awesome. And I'm, I'm, I'm full of gratitude and humility about the opportunity and the respect that they must have from me. In order to make this great decision for the city of Pasco. So, I wanted to publicly tell them how much I appreciate the opportunity. So, again, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Um, there are some reminders on the calendar. I will remind everyone. Uh, Wednesday, we have the State of the Cities. Um, I will be presenting on behalf of Pasco with the assistance and help and guidance of our awesome staff. Um, with that, uh, we do have a need for executive session. Discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation per RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero one I. For fifteen minutes. It is eight twenty-two. We will be back at eight thirty-seven. It is 8:45, and with no other items on our agenda, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone that tuned in. Have a great evening.